Good afternoon, everyone. It's good to see y'all. We're gonna go ahead and get our meeting called to order. I appreciate everyone being here. We did have a little bit of a change in our time and our date, but we're here and ready to conduct business. We do have copies of the agenda that are on the podium by Mr. Hobbie if anyone would like to grab one and follow through. What we will have tonight is our council workshop during which we won't actually be voting, just discussing items, and then immediately following that, we do have a special called meeting with a couple of items on the agenda that we will be addressing and potentially taking action on. We do have an item on the agenda to approve the agenda, but what I'd like to do is publicly make the statement that I'd like to move item number two, the GEMA statewide mutual aid agreement where Vicki Hickman will make a presentation up to item number one because she does have a county commission meeting immediately following this meeting. So if everyone's okay with that, we'll do that.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with that one.
That change, okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Thank you. Okay, well, let's go ahead and get started. Vicki, I'll let you go ahead and make that presentation. We appreciate you being here with us this evening.
Thank you for having me. Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilwoman. What I have to present this evening is the mutual aid statewide agreement with GEMA. We're currently in an agreement with GEMA. We have been for a very long time. The agreement that we are currently in expires March 1st, 2020. This has to be, this agreement has to be signed by all the municipalities. That's why I'm bringing it to you tonight. If signed, then this agreement will be valid through March the 1st of 2024. This agreement simply allows us to request resources from GEMA if needed during whatever event that we're having. It also allows GEMA to request resources from us if they're needed, if we have them available.
Okay. Any questions? We've been operating, like you said, under this agreement for some time.
Years.
Yeah, and it sort of is what it is. So, okay, all right, any questions, any comments, anything for Vicki? Okay.
No, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, no problem. Thank you. Okay, we'll go back to our original order of business and we'll go back to item number one, and that is the review of the proposed agreement with Golden Environmental. As you'll recall, we had discussed extending that contract for one year, but there would need to be some changes to the contract during that extension. Councilman Aylerz, if you're, would you be willing to kind of give an overview of everything that we've had or open the discussion?
As far as the terms or whatever? Well, I think what we had talked about with Mr. Golden and Golden Environmental was a one-year extension with the city having an option to continue that contract. Instead of putting it out for bid or whatnot, we know that a lot of resources are done, used by multiple people and businesses who may want to, you know, bid on that process. So what we've decided, if we're satisfied, we'll just add the option to extend that contract. The charge will be 1941. And the commercial, I don't have that information in front of me for the commercial, but 1941 will be a every week trash pickup and
Yard debris.
Yard debris, as well as every other week recycling.
Correct.
So, fair deal, I think, with the level of service increasing. And, you know, that's what's being presented today.
Okay, all right. Any questions if anybody is with?
Wes, was there bulky waste?
That was included in the weekly pickup.
Yeah.
Weekly?
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
We still do have all the specifics, which will write into the contract for your approval or discussion next meeting. But Rob and I are prepared to do that, so along with the specifics, making sure that everything is included.
Now, I know that there was still a question about the city being able to afford, to be able to do, potentially starting up the bad loads and the yard debris and to pick up there. And so to further evaluate that, we can certainly put together, if y'all would like to continue to evaluate that. I know, Councilman Fulk, you're very interested in that. We can certainly put together a committee to nail down those numbers. I know in the past, we've sort of talked in generalities and what ifs, and we could get very specific in some committee discussion if y'all would like to do that. I'd be happy to appoint a committee and we can continue to investigate that during this year that we've extended Mr. Golden's contract, if that's what we vote to do.
I would, you know, I was a proponent of that as well, so I would like to be on that committee or study committee.
Okay.
Let me ask a question around this extension. Or a year from now, we decide that, okay, things go good and we would go ahead without. Do we have the option to change, you know, pull out of the agreement the yard debris and bulk waste?
Yes, yes, so if the council decides at that time that the city of Tipton will begin picking up the bulk waste and yard debris, that option to, the option to extend the contract will be renegotiated at that time with Mr. Golden. It won't be, it won't be the same, you know,
Same price.
Same project or whatnot. I mean, the same, you know, you want it to go through a bidding process is basically what I'm saying is, is if we exercise that option and then we tell him, say, hey, listen, we're going to, and he is fully aware that we're going to study this, so he's prepared to make that change if we decide to do that.
So in other words, at the end of that year, we would have the alternative to just ask him to provide garbage collection and recycling collection, and the city do bulk waste and yard debris, or he continue to provide all four of those services.
That's correct.
So we could extend the contract, but say we could also negotiate to amend the contract.
That's correct, yes.
The renewal, is that, is it going to be year to year?
It would be January 1st, 2020.
You're talking about the option? You're talking about the option?
Yes.
It's just an option to extend. Is there a way to, you know, we can negotiate that at the time? You know, we can go three, five, or a year.
Are you talking about the extension? I thought you meant this first extension for the first year.
Well, I guess what we had talked about is not going through that bidding process. If we're satisfied with his service and whatnot, no need in going into a bidding process. We just tell him through written correspondence that we satisfied and we plan on exercising the option to extend the contract and then go from there.
Right, generally, I mean, if I put in the contract, the option to renew the contract, would that be for one, not renew for another year?
We're saying it could be multiple.
I think it'd be negotiable.
Yeah, can't we, do we have to?
We're just having
Well, let me ask you a simpler question, I guess. At the end of next year, do we have the ability at that point to say, okay, we're gonna do yard debris and bulk waste our own and negotiate strictly with Golden to do garbage and recycling?
Do we have that option to just say, we're only gonna negotiate with him?
I would suggest in the language, because it's gonna take us six months to, if that's the course of the council. So we need, at six months with this one-year extension, we need at six months to make a determination if we're, if the city is going to collect the debris so we can notify him in appropriate time.
And give him fair notice that that's, and he's, but we do have that ability to do that. If the study committee determines that by the time you take the cost of garbage pickup and recycling and separate it out with the city, is that, is that a, is that a fair fee for a consumer to pay? For our constituents and our residents and local businesses to pay?
So ideally, what I, with the committee idea, what my thoughts process, thought process was is that we would obviously begin that immediately and begin vetting different options. I know you and I have talked about it in great detail, so we know where we want to start. And we should be able to have some kind of answer or some sort of presentation, I would feel, that we could give to, you know, Pete probably before June, July, something like that, let us kind of hash it back and forth. I mean, he would be in the conversations with us, so it's not like that we're gonna be doing this and all of a sudden we're gonna explain it to Pete. Pete will be in this. But, you know, give some feedback on that and then maybe present it to the council in maybe an August meeting, if it's viable, and then allow for the last, you know, four to three to four months to get the process started, ordering trucks if that's needed, getting personnel in place and things of that nature, so.
One of the things that's in our contract now is that negotiations were to be completed no later than 120 days prior to the expiration of the contract. Now, of course, this was a five-year agreement. So do we want to have something similar to that as far as, you know, completions of negotiations, of the option to renew for, you know, 90 days, 120 days, 60 days?
I can tell you, I don't want it to happen December 9th of next year.
Well, that's right, and that's why I'm saying, that's why that's in here. So if we don't, if we don't have an agreement there by, that gives us time to look for another provider. So I would recommend that we have some drop dead date that negotiations should be completed so we know if we're going to exercise the option or not.
I mean, I would say you would have to exercise the option no later than July.
Well, that's what you're saying. You're saying six months.
Well, he's, well, he's saying 120.
Because if you decide not to exercise the option and you do go through the bidding process, that's gonna take time as well as for the person, the company.
I think we just make that, I mean, I think that we just make that part of our goal is that by June 1st, we know what the route is.
So we just want to say 180 days, you know, negotiations shall be completed, as far as the city?
Because it shouldn't take, it really shouldn't take the committee that long to be able to pull these numbers together and organize and present some information back to the council.
That's right.
So, and I want to be very fair to Mr. Golden and his company as well. You know, it's, we need to do, I think if we're gonna be good business partners, we need to be fair business partners, and we would expect that in return. So to give as much time as, you know, as possible and adequate time for whatever may happen. Personally, I'll be surprised if the committee finds out that we can do it as effectively as a garbage provider. But, you know, I'm open to the discussion, so therefore, you know, certainly have no problem with the committee investigating. So that all, we can uncover all the answers for everybody, so that everybody's very comfortable moving forward with whatever, with whatever is necessary.
It gives us an opportunity also to tell our constituents that we looked at every avenue possible and we vetted every single avenue that we could, we could explore. So that's why I'm in favor, and maybe we can, maybe we find out that it's not feasible for us to do that and we maintain that service with that contract or whatever. But, you know, I think that it would be best if we did, so.
And also by June, determine whether he's fulfilling the contract and whether we want to keep Golden Environmental.
Right, yeah. So I, just so I, clarification, will he be providing these four services for the first term, for the first year? And we will not be doing yard debris or bulky waste, at least for the first year. I would not start until
After 2021.
If we renew.
If we do it, yeah.
But it's okay, Rob, saying, we don't have to put out bids. We can just say, we're only gonna negotiate with Richard.
Well, I tell you what, let me back up. State law doesn't require that. I'd need to look at our purchasing policies. We may, you know, that may run afoul of our purchasing policies.
That's my, yeah.
So, let's, I'll take a look at that.
No, what now?
We may, I mean
Purchasing policies, so that we can just say, we're only gonna negotiate with one person?
I think, yeah, I think
You're really extending a contract.
Our purchasing policies do address certain amounts where you have to send things out for bids. I can't remember, there are exceptions to that, and I need to look at those exceptions. And of course, you can always revise your purchasing policies if you so desire.
Right, but we need, that was my only point, but let, and I don't want to, I don't, I can't help myself sometimes. But I made statements in the past and I, and you all know my position on these, and I think they might have been misinterpreted by some. But a couple of things, one, I talked about the contract. Nobody's, you know, it surprised anybody that we got a stack of complaints, okay? And the contract is, it says this, he wasn't doing that, and so I was very vocal about making sure this contract that we agree with it and Richard agreed with it. And my point is, if Richard is okay with the contract, if he signs it, then that means he's gotta do that, period, you know? And the other two items, the yard debris, I haven't changed my position. I maintain that every other week was adequate if it was done every other week. And it wasn't being done in various neighborhoods because I had to call and I know it, so that was a problem. Bulk waste, I don't lay it at Richard's feet. Richard's gonna have a time with it, whether it's every week, whether it's every day, whether it's whatever. As long as these landlords can just put an apartment full of furniture out there, willy-nilly, whenever they want to, he could have picked up the day before and they got, now they got another week to be strewn and a mirror fall off and here it is, and all of a sudden, Richard hadn't picked it up. Well, it's not Richard's fault.
Well, and we do need to be, I don't disagree that, we need to be better in the enforcement of our own ordinances, and that's part of our ordinance, and that's not his role to enforce.
Right, exactly. We need something that puts the cost of dealing with that back on the people that are making money by renting these places to have an increase of $3.50, which I am totally opposed to. I said it two weeks ago, I'll say it again today, I don't want to raise people's rates. And does $3.50 sound like a lot? I can afford it, no question about it. There's a lot of people, you start doing it, fixed income people, it is a struggle, and I don't, I just don't agree with it. So, but we've gotta, if you go ahead and when we do this, we've gotta make Richard successful and deal with those items and put it back on a landlord and put something in place that does not allow them to just put stuff out on the street. And we should put a charge associated with that and let them pay for it and not the people down the street that never put anything out. That's, that's my point, where you're having to pay for things that these landlords, they're making money off of it, and I have no, I just have no patience with that, so.
Well, let's, I think that, I've had numerous conversations with Mr. Golden over the last several days, and I think we're in a good place, and I think that the weekly pickup has been very successful. I think, you know, one of the challenges that we all, you know, agreed upon was that we wanted a cleaner city for all districts and for the whole community. And I'm seeing that, and I think he's upheld his end of the bargain and been very cooperative in that effort. If we're increasing service, then it, you know, we have to increase fees. I mean, that's, that's, that's an expectation.
Increasing money.
And increasing the viability, I mean, the amount of service. So, we have the contract, Rob, I think you've got all the questions answered that you need to be able to put that together. Like I said, we've had some very good conversations with the contract provider, with Mr. Golden, and I feel very good about this moving forward, so your information's duly noted. That being said, what I will do then is I will appoint a committee to study. Jack, I'm gonna put you and Wes on that, if y'all are both willing to serve. So let's investigate the possibility of the city being able to do that. Again, I'm gonna put that on y'all to be able to provide a report back to us no later than end of April, 1st of May. I know that's a tight timeline. Pete, is that a feasible timeline so that we can?
It's a perfect time because budget, we'll need to know that, so I would try to accelerate that as much as I can. If we have three months, it's a lot of time, I think, to do that.
Yeah, okay. And I know Ricky, you'll be available to help with that and to investigate that. So if y'all will be prepared to present that to the council, either at the April council meeting or the May workshop, sometime in that timeframe, then we can make a decision moving forward, and that will give adequate time, if there is to be a change, for all parties to be involved, you know, with plenty of time. Did you have anything? You look like you want to say something, okay.
No, I mean, I agree with Jack, I hate to see rates rise, but we look to other providers too. We'd have to raise rates.
We'd have to raise rates.
We haven't raised them in what, like, six years or so?
And Frank, I'd like to piggyback on what you said there, is also, at the end of the day, when we, you know, when the city of Tipton was providing this service, we were somewhere around $23, $24 a month. We're still underneath, we're 20% cheaper than that even at the 1941, so, you know.
And the cost of doing business has gone up over the years.
Exactly.
But you hit the point of information, I think we did just go up the last year, if I'm not mistaken.
That's because of the tonnage, though, that wasn't.
That wasn't related to that.
That wasn't a service-related.
Well, look, but the rate went up. We don't pay the same thing today as we were paying last year. That was my, that was my point.
All right, any further discussion on item number one under old business?
No.
All right, Rob, you said you found what you need, okay, and you're both willing to serve on this committee?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have already addressed item number two, that was Vicki's presentation. Item number three, call on John Shepherd, it's consideration for naming four alleys according to city procedures. So John, let you share that information with us.
All right. Good evening. Here to talk about naming four alleys. This came up last year when we were asked to confirm our centerline street mileage. As you may know, the centerline mileage is used to calculate our funding for L-MIG and the TIA funding when we start getting that. Part of that process, they told us that at that time, alleys wouldn't be included in the centerline mileage. And through discussions, they said, changing their mind, that we could count them. If the alleys are named, they have traffic control and there's street signs on them. So I got in touch with South Georgia Regional Commission, got a list of our alleys and the names of them, and we proceeded to put all the signage up, and we completed it. We had four alleys that didn't have official names on them. And in your documents, the four alleys would be named South, Second Lane, West Ninth Lane, Prince Lane, and Marianne Lane.
Okay, pretty straightforward.
It is. I wanted to commend John as he finishes here, but, you know, the state and DOT, they're always changing rules, especially in the L-MIG, so when we found out that the alleys wouldn't be counted because of no signage, because of no traffic control, that was $30-something thousand that we would have lost. So John and Jeff really helped with that, but if it wasn't for them, we would have lost that money. So I appreciate their involvement, and now we're able to count all those alleys, just like we were able to do in the past, so.
Just because we're guilty of the alphabet soup of acronyms. L-MIG is the Local Maintenance Improvement Grant, which comes from the Department of Transportation. So it does have a direct impact upon our ability to pay and stripe and do improvements to our roads, and that's $30,000.
It is, the guys work quick on this one, so.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you. Thank you for, one, thank you for discovering that, and two, thank you for your work on this project. We appreciate that very much. Okay, any questions or comments regarding that?
I'm just sad that there wasn't an Aylerz lane.
That's next time.
Yeah, that'll be next. Yeah, yeah, all right. Item number four, suggested bylaw changes for the Downtown Development Authority. Pete, do you want to present those?
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe between you and Frank. Frank's our DDA appointee.
In the last DDA meeting, this was presented, and I don't know, I don't know where it came from, who presented it, but the board started talking about it and I saw bylaws and there was some puzzled look. So I just made the suggestion that Frank may want to describe this to you so we understand what it is and that, obviously, per the bylaws, that the DDA is allowed to change their bylaws themselves. But again, wording, we just want to make sure we're consistent and then what that holds for future, to make sure that we're on task with things going forward, so.
Yeah, my understanding is, this came about because there are times when certain documents need to be signed because of time constraints and all that, and just to give the chairman or vice chairman authority to do that without the full board having to make a formal vote on it first. Obviously, I think when these documents are signed, the board already knows these documents coming about. It's just they may have not have voted right then to say sign them.
I would say that is standard for Georgia Downtown Development Authority, but usually it falls underneath the chairman's description of duties. My recommendation, I think, I'm going to make to go up is to read that. I mean, the sentence is just, to an average person who's reading the bylaws, that's hard to understand what was presented. So I think it just needs to be reworded.
Okay. Let's remand this back to the DDA for that. Because, you're right, Abby, I mean, if I were just to read that, I would assume, if I came in with a document that said the DDA is gonna give me a billion dollars a year for the rest of my life, they can sign that and never mind.
That's not what it's supposed to be.
No.
I asked DCA for an example, and they just sent it to me about five minutes before I walked in. So it is pretty standard. I'm just thinking it needs to be reworded so that everyone can
Well, let's just, let's just send that back to DDA and then they can bring it back to us at a future date.
That's a great suggestion.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll take out the lawyer, he's on it.
There you go. Sorry, Rob.
We just refer it back to DDA.
Just refer it back to the DDA to bring us new ver, new language and the, based on the DCA recommendations and everything, so, yeah. So we'll look at this at a future date. Are y'all okay with, everybody good with that? Does that make sense? Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, you really don't need to approve that. That's a DDA function, so it won't come back to you.
Yeah, I think it was just the DDA wanted the council to know what the DSA's and so on.
Yes, okay, gotcha, okay, all right, perfect. All right, we are now under the resolutions section of our agenda, and the first item under resolutions is a resolution authorizing an increase in the excise tax on rooms, lodging, and accommodations, otherwise known as the hotel motel tax. Pete, you want to go over that? I know we've had a lot of discussion with our tourism association and various folks around town.
Hey, Council, Jessica did provide you a, some outlines and some documentations, and what I'd like to start with, there is a little map with some pennies on it. Can you see that one? Okay, this is from, from the DCA about OCGA, and it's regarding going up to 7% on a hotel motel. So if you look between this particular form and the one, it's an email with the budget numbers on it. Trying to describe to you the way this works, obviously, email is, looks like this.
It'd be page 51, I mean, excuse me, page 50 of our packet.
Yeah, so you could see our total hotel motel revenue at 5%, and then you slide to the right at 7%, considerable increase. And you drop down to unrestricted, that's the first three cents. So if you look on the other chart, the three cents is the non-restricted. This is the monies that come to the city of Tipton. That will not be changing, 732,183. This, again, this will not go up, but this obviously will stay the same. Now, it could go up based off the number of hotel rooms and the tax that continues up, but we are locked in for the three pennies on the unrestricted, okay? The second three pennies, you could drop down below, that is restricted, and that is called the tourism, and this has to be designated for certain things. They currently receive 488,122 at 5% hotel motel. They would be going to 732,183, same as us. So again, the tourism, what they're, they do with that, there's an explanation and definitions in your packet regarding that. But again, it is used for tourism. This actually is, the conversations has been had with the convention center, for instance. And if they wanted to talk with the tourism board and the convention center because of the state budget shortfalls, then this is where the extra money would come from. The tourism board would take this up. So that pot of money, again, has to be designated accordingly. And then the last penny, this is where it comes into restricted, but this is what's called tourism product development, and this will be $244,000 that would be in addition to this. This particular one is where it's brick and mortar. It's used for certain items. I know it's been mentioned about park and recreation a few times. So I did talk to the county manager today, they are, the board of commissioners are approving their resolution. Jessica and Rob have our resolution before you for your consideration. So at the end of the day, the counties describes, you know, they don't have many hotels, but the money that they're going to receive is gonna go towards recreational purposes through the Tiff County Recreation Department. Our's is a little more general because the text comes into us, and obviously, we'll be in discussions with them and how that works. But all in all, it's, the benefit goes to where it needs to go. And the heartbeat for hotel motel is the tourism and the restricted dollars, where we're making our community bigger, better, especially the marketability, and at the end, filling up the hotels plus the new ones. That's what it's all about, so I will, I know Angela's here and Abby's here, but we So, I will, I know Angela's here and Abby's here, but we can answer any questions, but this is how it looks for that. The resolution is ready for your approval Monday. Again, the county should be approving theirs tonight, and we can send this up for local legislation.
And this is long overdue.
I agree.
We've been doing this three and four years, and it's paid by non-residents. I mean, what better tax is that?
What better way to improve our, our recreation department than someone else's?
I mean, you sit here, Ashburn, eight percent, you know, Valdosta, seven, I think Perry's seven, all along, and we're sitting here at five? I mean, this, this is, that's no longer...
It's a great lead. I think everybody, and I wanted to thank, you know, Tyron, who's led the charge, that we, we were in the tourism board meetings when it first was discussed. Everybody's been involved in it, and I think tourism is ready to jump to the next level, and I completely agree with you.
Excellent.
So, we're, we're ready to go, and it sounds like, you know, from the county manager, the county is going to take care of the resolution, and if you have any questions about ours, I think it just positions us very well to, to do what we need to do.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a note writer, at least they've done.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to just, I don't know how you feel, if it comes, this is not a money-making thing for the city of Tifton.
No, it's not.
I, I want to be explicit with that, that tourism and the tourism board, they really get the charge, and the benefit is our hotels.
Right.
There's a lot of money being invested, and when you have two hotels coming online in today's market, Tifton Georgian is doing something. So, we have to support that through our, our venues, from OMG to tourism board, getting people in here and get them in beds. That's what it's about, it's not about the city of Tifton.
Excellent. Angela, anything you or Abby would like to add to the conversation? Here's our experts right here.
I think he's exactly right. I know with the increase on the tourism in our actual budgets, you know, that it's a commitment we're getting, along with, you know, the discussion with the conference center, we're ready to put our staff on the road and straight shows and things like that to recruit conferences and things like that as well.
So, it'd be money spend.
We're working with the hotels to build a new group.
Exactly.
Yeah, I forgot to mention, I did have a good conversation with Joe West, Dr. West, about the convention center. We did talk about numbers, and this is a great lead-in, because Angela and the tourism board will be taking this matter up with the college and deciding how this is best for the convention center, because that's part of it as well. But conversations on all fronts are being had, and I think that's the best thing for our community.
Excellent. All right, any other comments, questions? Okay, all right, thank you for your match. All right, we'll move on to item number six, and that's resolution approving the purchase of six point three three six acres of land for urban redevelopment. Rob and Pete, want to bear that?
I'll just defer to Rob if we could start the conversations. This is very technical, kind of, it is considered a longstanding, it's not an issue, but something that we had to... Excuse me, I was having...
Well, you know, as y'all, as y'all remember, you know, we were contemplating purchasing the twelve acres originally.
Rob?
Yes?
I got a question. Should I recuse myself from these discussions?
Wes did recuse himself from the discussions of the previous acres, of the other acre.
Thank you, Wes. Okay, now, going back, as you remember, we were contemplating buying the entire twelve acres of Captain's Point. We went, ran into some issues because of the number of trailers that were there, basically wound up buying half of it, well, about five point seven acres. At that time, you know, we were contemplating that those, you know, we were going to look at track two, try to get an option to buy track two. I think we're looking at the idea that really, we needed twelve acres to really effectively develop this property. So, I have been talking with Larry Reiner, you know, the owner, and we have come up with the same price that we had for the twelve acres. We've already paid X number of dollars for the five point seven, this would make up the remainder of what we contemplated to be the purchase price for the entire twelve. We're looking towards a closing date of December the twentieth, and I've had the title search updated, there's no title issues, and so what we're contemplating is putting down a twenty thousand dollar earnest money, and then working towards getting this closed. There is, you know, certainly there's some existing trailers that's being provided for in the agreement. Some of the trailers will be, will be moved because they've been bought. I think Mr. Reiner is also going to acquire some of the trailers, and, you know, we will have a listing of the trailers on the, in the sales agreement. But whatever Mr. Reiner wants to take, he can take, you know, and relocate to wherever he, he can relocate them. I've been in communication with the law from Down Valdosta, as well as GMA, regarding how we can deal with the remaining trailers. Certainly, I'm sure we're going to give everybody ample time to, to deal with, you know, find another place to go, but this will, this will take some time. But bottom line is, we've got, we've got an agreement, you know, to acquire this, closing date December twenty, and I think we're, we're on track to get it done.
What, I just want to make sure that we don't back ourselves in a corner with these, with the remaining homes being owner occupied, that we don't back ourselves in a corner with any future interaction with any of our state or federal agencies that can help us with housing development.
I've had no indication that there would be an issue.
Okay.
You know, honestly, I have been, you know, looking at this issue since we got into buying track one, and it really wasn't until today that, you know, I'd been able to confer with, you know, other council, Ruchi Patel at GMA, and the, what I had been told is that we'll be just like any other landlord. So, we are not dealing with HUD property now, we're not dealing with any HUD bunnies, you know, I understand this is SPOS dollars, so we don't have that to come into play.
Right.
Mayor, I wish I could tell you one hundred percent that, you know, we wouldn't, we won't have issues. Right now, I don't think we will, I don't see that we will, and that's the best I can tell you right now.
So, just so I'm clear, the, the process would be, we close on the property. Now, we are the owners of that land that they are renting currently.
Correct.
They own their, their dwelling, but they're renting their lot space.
Correct.
They would make those payments to the city of Tifton or the Urban Redevelopment Agency?
City of Tifton.
Okay, and then we would give them notice that they need to be moved?
Yes.
From a location in a certain timeframe and that kind of thing?
Correct. So, bottom line is, basically, the trailers that are owned by people now, you know, we would, you know, give them notice that, you know, the, that the lot, the lot lease will be terminating, and that they will, you know, need to move the trailer. Now, at that point in time, we'll have to deal with that issue naturally. There will be some people, you know, who, trailers may remain there, there will be a process that we can go through in order to get the trailers moved to a different location, that's usually done by a moving company, you know, who will store them, and then they'll make, you know, they, they will be the ones that will be making disposition of those trailers.
Okay, so that would, that cost would be, that would be the, the owner's responsibility of the, of the home that's being moved?
Yes, it would be. The way I contemplate that working is that if we have to have these trailers moved, we may have to pay that cost upfront in order to get them moved and located to a lot. And then, then that owner of the lot, you know, they incur a lien because they're storing the trailer. My understanding would be that, you know, if that lien's not satisfied, it can be sold, and then I think that we, that we coop our money back.
Okay.
You know, I just not, I wish I could be more definitive about the process, but, you know, my view of it, my opinion of it, is that, you know, we, we need the property. Certainly, it is going to involve some acrobatics, so to speak, to make, you know, to, to get things done.
Right.
So, we can ultimately get to, to our ultimate goal. It's probably going to take some time.
Okay.
And we'll just have to work through it, you know, as we...
How many mobile homes are we taking the charge of here?
Well, that's a good question, because right now, there are some that are past due. The owner may, you know, maybe dealing with a lot of these trailers prior to us actually acquiring them, but I'm looking at probably sixteen. And there will be some that will be, that will remain on the property that can't be moved, that really need to be demolished. So, really, when we start thinking about if we've got to move some trailers, we are probably looking at sixteen, and potentially, then some that remain, we'll just have to see whether or not we want to try to sell them or send them to landfill.
Okay. All right, any further questions? Comments? Okay. All right, Jessica, you want to get, or Frank, if you don't mind, can you just tell Wes to come back in? All right, we'll move on to item number seven under resolutions, and that's the resolution to implement the self-correction plan for the city's retirement plan. Rob, you want to go over that?
Yes, Mayor, Council. Basically, what, what this involves is inadvertently, one of our employee, former city employees who moved over to ESG retired and began to draw early retirement at age fifty-five. However, that was not something that was permitted by our plan. And certainly, if you do something that's contrary to your plan, you're running up against the IRS. And so, basically, if you have not followed your plan, then you can do what they call a self-correction, which does not involve anything with the IRS. You can just go ahead and make, have a self-correction plan. So, basically, what this resolution provides for is implementing a self-correction plan whereby the overpayment to the employee will be paid back into the plan's trust fund. Resolution provides that that money would be paid by the city to replenish the trust fund. That, that amounts about ninety-five hundred dollars, that's with the interest, and that would be as of December the twentieth, is what time is when we would repay that. Quite frankly, this was something that was, something that was an oversight by the city, and we think that asking this employee to fund the money, return the money would be a hardship, and, and the IRS rules and regulations do allow for the city to do this. So, that is what is for the council.
Okay. All right, any questions, comments? Okay, well, then, let's move on to item number eight, resolution certifying the 2019 general election results. Jessica, you want to go over that with us?
The county elections superintendent has sent over the final, final numbers for the election in November, and the city, every time we have elections, we just approve that, the certified returns.
Okay.
So, this kind of just makes it part of our records.
Part of our records, okay. All right, and that packet is, that information is in our packet, so if anyone has any questions or comments, make those, otherwise, we will move on. We have alcohol resolutions to discuss next, and that's a resolution for an amended alcohol license for Circle K located at ten oh two Eighth Street, and that application is in our packet. Jessica, anything we need to know there?
Item number ten, out of all of them, most of them did not have any issues. Item number ten, there was a background disclosed for the applicant, which was the manager of that location. We have reviewed that, and it was a null cross, so we are recommending approval, but that was the only one that had, um...
Had any issues, okay.
Yeah, anything that came up.
Okay, so that would, that, there were no issues with ten oh two, eight, eight oh two seventh? None of, none of those listed on our agenda, correct?
That was the only one that, you know, had everything, everything else, the backgrounds and application.
Okay, okay.
Clear.
Does anyone have any questions on, on any of these resolutions, items number nine through twelve? Again, those applications are in our packets, pretty straightforward, kind of standard business. Okay, we will move on at this point to other business. We have our board reports, but Jessica does such a good job of providing for us each month. We also have the board qualifications, various boards have different items that are criteria that people need to qualify for, and you can see we've got some new folks that have applied. My recommendation would be that we, we, again, hold off until later to appoint these board members. But that's, that's, you know, we certainly won't be making any appointments tonight, but if anyone would like to discuss any of the candidates, we can certainly do that this evening.
On the, the library board, didn't we appoint Kendra Gannaway? I think we already, we appointed her to an open position.
Yeah, we did. I need to, um, Christie Daniels, I got a email today from Vicki, and Christie Daniels has resigned, and I didn't get to put it on here, but we will be having a vacancy on that.
On the library board?
Which one?
The library. Yep, she has been...
So, Gannaway was appointed, but we will now have...
She, she was appointed, because she was the last one.
But we'll now have another open seat on the library board. Any, any questions, comments on any of these? Again, we can, we can discuss this further at the next meeting.
I see, Michael Bowen resigned from the, was there any, was he just too busy?
He, he did send a letter into Bruce, and Bruce, Bruce Green did respond, I thought with, with a very good response. His concern was, he see, he is certainly a developer, say he sees himself, he is certainly a developer in this community, and the concern was his potential interest, I think, in future development in the city, and here he is on a board. You know, we did want developers and contractors and those type of individuals on this board, but at, at the same time, he felt that that could be a conflict, which it could.
It could be.
So, he, he made the decision to, to withdraw. We do have his resignation letter on file, it's very well-written, very complimentary of the plans for the Urban Redevelopment Agency, but felt that at this point in time, it would be better for him to serve in some other arena where he's not so connected with developments. A fair summation, Pete, of his...
Yes, and Bobby Campbell was the alternate, if you remember. She's been going to all the meetings, so she would be obviously the next person to go on there if you so desire.
Right. So, what we'll need to do is put, I guess, on our next board report, we need to put the appointment, the official appointment of Bobby, since Michael has resigned.
Yeah, she's on there.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we'll handle that at the end of the month, or next week, it's not the end of the month. All right, any other questions, comments on the board report? All right, Pete, city manager report?
The only thing I have, Mayor, Council, just I wanted to thank Abby and the committee for a great, just hard work with the parade and everything that has gone into it. There's so much behind the scenes that happens, and the time and logistics, tremendous effort. So, thank you to all them and your work and how you did it, I appreciate that. And then, a special thanks to Jessica, she threw herself in and got involved in Christmas lights this year, and, you know, with Jeff and ESG, those guys are just instrumental in that. But, you know, the park looks great, the parade, it's just, everything turned out wonderful, so I just appreciate everybody's involvement. That's all I have.
Okay. All right, now, we have council reports, council comments, not reports, but comments. Frank, we'll start down there with you.
I just want to echo the comments about the hometown holidays and trade, I thought everything went well. I think the city staff and ESG did a great job, and the public really enjoyed it, and I've heard pretty much good things about it.
I would agree.
It was, it was a great night.
Excellent, all right, very good. Jack? And you can't talk about LSU, I'm sorry.
I won't mention LSU. I will talk about Saturday and the parade, and Abby, and all the good things, and Saturday was an excellent day from beginning to the end of the ballgame, and it just says it all.
Boy, okay, Wes?
I mean, Abby, y'all, hats off again, y'all did a fantastic job at hometown holidays. ESG, you guys did a fantastic job as well. Just kudos to all involved.
Excellent. All right.
Wes enjoyed the ballgame, too.
He did.
I watched it. My team didn't play in it, so...
Well, I'm, I'm going to wrap up the comments also, and then we'll go into our special call meeting. Just hats off to Abby and the team for an outstanding weekend with hometown holiday celebration, all the events and everything, and how it was coordinated and put together was just exceptional. Also, want to brag on the Urban Redevelopment Agency again, on Sunday afternoon, we had the open house for the New Design Cottage, and if you've not been by to see the New Design Cottage, it is, it is really, it's a service that I don't know of any other community that's offering when it comes to our residents and businesses who want to make improvements to their property, or maybe build something, or make changes, the resources that... uh, the resources that are under that roof are just exceptional, and, um, to be able to go in and sit down with your contractor, or your designer, or your landscaper, or whoever, or just go in on your own as a homeowner or a business owner and, and peruse through that information, and then walk right across the parking lot there into the permitting and, and HPC office and all those, into, you know, all the folks that fall under community development, zoning, everything, and have access, uh, so that it's a seamless plan and make it as user-friendly as possible. I don't know of any other community that has that type of setup. So, uh, so again, that was one of the first projects that the Urban Redevelopment Agency wanted to put together, because we know there's going to be some significant development in that area, and making sure that the aesthetics and the design is, uh, is followed so that us, that we can keep our city as, as attractive as possible, so hats off on that, uh, great event on Sunday afternoon, so thank you, uh, for that. All right, if there's nothing else to come before the council, we will adjourn our workshop, take about a two-second break, and then we'll go into the special call meetings. Anybody need to take a break, or, all right, y'all good? You can, okay, well, let's go ahead and call the special call meeting, uh, together, and again, this would be a meeting where we are actually voting, we do not vote in the workshop, but will at this meeting. We have two items on the agenda, and one is that resolution we just discussed concerning the approval of the purchase of the six point three-three-six acres of land for the Urban Redevelopment Group, uh, and I'll take a motion.
Let me ask you this, Mayor, do I need to, I mean, do I need to walk out?
Oh, I keep forgetting that, yes.
Yeah, you give me...
Yes, I'm sorry, I forgot about that, Wes. Sorry about that. Can you get through, I'm sorry. Okay, again, I'll pose the question. Do we have a motion, uh, to approve or reject the purchase?
I move to, um, approve the purchase of the six point three-three-six acres.
Okay.
Second.
Is your second, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. All right, the last item on our agenda, and the second item on our special call meeting agenda, is the resolution to implement the self-correction plan for the city's retirement plan, and that was just presented to us a few minutes ago. Rob, explain that. Uh, is there a motion to that effect?
Before you make that, give me, you know, this was kind of an unusual circumstance.
Mm-hmm.
When, when you move people from city to ESG and, and the pension and, and the whole thing, so this, you know, this wasn't, you know, somebody took it off the ball, it was just, it, it's one who's been involved with pensions and moving them, this kind of thing, it's just all kind of moving parts, and it just happened, and so it was called and corrected and, you know, uh, unless you've gotten involved with pensions, then I would tell you, you don't really understand what, what goes on in them, uh, and so it's just not an uncommon thing.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, otherwise, there would not be this process of self-correct, because guess what? It happens, so you have to have a, you know, there's a process to correct it, so what do you mean it's gone on before? But, so, anyway, but I, with that being said, I move to approve that plan.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, Pete, is there anything else to come before the council?
I'm sorry, I, I, yeah. I was reading, I was reading, you know, I'm sorry, I was...
Thank you for catching that.
I do apologize.
Should, should we, should I redo the vote? Okay, is everybody good?
No, no.
All right, Pete, anything else we need to do?
I'll just, I'll be putting out emails, don't forget, um, Thursday is our, Friday is our, um, employee Christmas luncheon.
Excellent.